And Bill, anytime you want to start the recording.
Okay, I'm recording now.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everyone. It is February 23rd, 2022, 6:00 PM, and I am calling this Cedar Valley City Council Meeting to Order. Will you please all stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the power of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So good to be back. So good to be back in the chamber and at the dais. So I will do roll call. I will begin with Councilman Brendan McGoffin.
Present.
Councilman Chuck Owen.
Present.
Councilwoman Joellen Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Glenn Allen.
Present.
Councilman Nick Lavaca.
Present.
Councilman Joe Burns.
Present.
And Councilwoman Sarah Diamond.
Present.
Excellent, okay, thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the agenda.
Owen, let me make that motion.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Consent agenda, items one through five. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. All right, fantastic. Okay, moving on to, we do not have any special guests or presentations tonight, so we will move on to staff reports. And I will begin with Fire Chief Frank Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Not a lot to report this evening. Good news as we are sitting here this evening is COVID numbers are down, the mask mandate's coming to an end. There was some concern earlier, or late last week, of a new variant, the BA2 variant. But we're being told that that's not spreading in Washington, and it's not really any different from Omicron. So not a big worry for us, which is all great news. County Public Health is going to continue to do public testing. Even with rates down, they believe there's still a lot of benefit with that. They're going to move the testing site from the fairgrounds here March 14th over to Cascade Mall by Johnny Carino's, with some limited hours, but still the availability for that. The hotel where they've been using quarantine and isolation facilities is down to three people, which I think is an all-time low since that was started or initiated. All of our hospitals, the censuses are way down for the first time in a long time, probably six or seven months. United out here at Peace Health was granted an extension of some extra beds by the Department of Health. So if we have an upscale of any events locally, we'll have some extra beds we didn't have before. The county is also looking at opening some cold weather shelters in concrete, and hopefully in Mount Vernon Burlington as the temperatures have been down. And our crews have done an amazing job this last couple of weeks. And you might have heard or seen that our local bargaining unit was out yesterday at Evergreen School, giving out some coats for the children. And they'll be again out tomorrow at 3:30 at Evergreen, no, yesterday at Evergreen, tomorrow at Mary Purcell. So some great public service, giving back to the community, and some great pictures, and some pretty great kids out there. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Great service, and fantastic to learn that maybe we're seeing our way out of this pandemic, huh? Thank you. Are there any questions for the chief? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to Police Lieutenant Dan McElroy. Good evening, Dan.
Good evening, the Mayor and Council. Thank you. I don't have much either. So right now, I'm currently just planning for a promotional assessment center for the sergeant promotion coming up. Just preemptively doing that for when the transition occurs in August. Trying to figure that out and get that squared away, because I know a lot of officers tend to take vacations during the summertime. So planning for that. That's in April. I have one officer that's halfway done through FTO, training his field training. He'll be done in March and on his own. And then Officer Jeff Gates comes back from deployment, and he's back in March. So doing pretty good there.
Fantastic.
That's all I have for you today.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for the lieutenant? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Dan. We will move on to Director of IT, Bill Chambers.
Hi, all. The cemetery information management system is going to be coming online. We're having a training, our first training session next week. So that's pretty exciting to finally have that done. Been working on more DocuWare and GovQA coaching and refresher training for staff. And the Microsoft 365 transition is complete. Now we're just working on the setting up the archiving, the Teams archiving within the SMAR system. What he's been working on, some spam and phishing message prevention measures in our mail system, and some network device firmware and software security updates that are necessary. And I've been doing some more work on enhancements to the city website and social media. And after our first meeting of the Council Technology Committee, I'm going to be working on new policies for IT department security and succession. And that's about it.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Bill? All right, thank you, Bill. Director of Public Works, Mark Freiberger. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. Good evening, Council. A couple of things I want to bring to your attention tonight. We are working on a grant request for what's called the RAISE program. I'm not sure of the acronym. It's a federal program that resulted from the Infrastructure Act that was passed by the Federal Congress back in December, January area. Anyway, we are going to be looking at applying for a fairly large grant to complete the BNSF under crossing project that would connect Jones and John Liner Road. A little background on that, as you know, we've been working with the Washington Legislature for the last couple of months, looking for funding to complete the corridor project. And it looks like we've come to a dead end on that. Both the Senate and the House packages have been announced and do not include our project. They concentrated mostly on the mega projects like 522 widening and the Columbia River Crossing. So it doesn't appear that that's going to be a valuable path for us on that. And that's probably going to be a long-term issue now for the legislature, because it's a $16 billion program that they are trying to bring forward on that. And it looks like they have the votes to do that. Also, continuing with the legislative part, we'd also made a request for some capital budget funding for the Public Works Vehicle Storage Building. And it looks like we're not in the budget for that either, that were announced both for the House and the Senate. So I think we did a pretty good effort on that, just as a tough year for the capital budget and legislature was concentrating on the larger-scale projects on the mega project transportation level. So we're going to look at the federal program. It is due on February the 14th. I anticipate having a memorandum to you for your approval of the matching funds. Working with Charlie and Debbie to identify those. And we'll bring that forth for your review, either on March 9th or 23rd, most likely on the 23rd, to give us time to get the estimates updated and ready for that. Beyond that, Nathan will be presenting on an RCO opportunity for playfield equipment a little later in the meeting. And we also have, as anybody that's been down by the wastewater plant knows, seen some significant progress on the building project. It's dried in now, the wastewater structure is. And they are putting conduit in for the electrical system, and the HVA system is underway. They are waiting for their trust package to be delivered for the other building, the Public Works Operations Building. And as soon as that's done, they'll frame that up and get that one dried in, probably in the next month to six weeks as well. So that's all moving along pretty well. The rest of what we have going on are the design projects that we have for this year and next. And that's all I'll say for now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments for Mr. Freiberger? Okay, hearing none. It does look good. I have driven by there, down by the wastewater treatment plant. It is looking good, and it's very exciting to see it come together. Thank you, Mark. Director of Building and Permits, John Coleman.
Evening. Good evening, Council, Mayor. Reminder, a week from tonight, we're having a joint City Council and Planning Commission work session. That's next Wednesday. We're beginning the process of the 2022 Comp Plan Update, also known as the 2022 Docket. So I'll explain the timelines of that process and what the Planning Commission's going to be working on in 2022 at that meeting. One small thing that we're working on in the department here is there's been some talk about wanting to get some maps on our website, some interactive maps on our website that might allow people to go to our website and see where projects are on the map. This is a kind of a fancy bells and whistles sort of product that some of the bigger cities offer. But we're working with our permit software company to see if they offer something like that. It's going to take them quite a while to develop something like that. They have it in their plans to do. So I'm at my urging, and hopefully they'll move it up forward. It's worth noting, the company that we use for our permit tracking provides a great service at a very reasonable price. But they lack the bells and whistles that a lot of the more expensive permit tracking companies offer. These sorts of permit tracking software or cloud-based services can be extraordinarily expensive. So we're very happy, and being a small city, we're fortunate to be able to find a service that is at the rate that we have. So we're a little bit stuck without spending a whole lot of money on some of the bells and whistles, like I said. But we'll see if we can get them to do it. And it would be, it's something that, you know, as staff, we would love to have. And maybe we can get it done for a reasonable price. I've got a couple of agenda items today for the council, so I will leave it at that for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Are there any questions for John?
Madam Mayor, I just got one.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, John, for looking into that interactive map. I didn't know they had that in other places. I'll look that up, though it seems pretty interesting. But I do appreciate you looking into that. I think that'd be pretty fun to get in there, see it, and be able to spread it open and look at the projects and see how they're coming along and whatnot. Appreciate that.
John, I had one question for you, too, if I can ask it. Are some of the developers looking for concessions on their parking restrictions? Are you being approached by people doing that?
Always. I don't think there's a project that ever happens without an applicant asking if they can have some concessions on parking, and that's just a reality.
I'm thinking mostly of the one out by Janiki Field where they want to park on school property, and they want to use Hodgins Drive. And, you know, you're probably way more aware than I am, so.
That is, that specifically, there is a, there was a request from two developers working out in that urban village mixed area, mixed-use overlay that were requested officially through the city to change the codes to allow some different parking facilities and amounts of parking out in that area. That is something that the Planning Commission reviewed. They had a public hearing recently, and they made a recommendation. And right now, I'm working on the SEPA notices and the sort of the background paperwork before that comes to City Council for your consideration of. And you'll have full record of what the Planning Commission reviewed and what was presented at the public hearing. So you'll have all of the information in front of you to consider and ultimately make a decision. I'll be presenting that thoroughly at a future meeting, so I'll spare everybody the preview at this meeting. But rest assured, it's coming your way for a decision, and we'll have all of the information for you to consider.
Thank you. I would just hope that the same rules apply to everyone equally. So anyway, that's my two cents worth, okay?
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to Director of Finance, Debbie Burton. Good evening, Debbie.
Good evening. I just, we're just busily working on year-end stuff, and I have a whole list of projects that I want to make sure get transitioned well as I do in my employment with the city. But as you know, you will be seeing me for a while. Apologize, I am on grandma duty. So. Okay, so anyway, thank you for all your support. I may have a grandson born within the meeting. I'm very hopeful, we've been waiting a couple of days now. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Debbie. Are there any questions for Debbie? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to City Attorney Nikki Thompson. Good evening, Nikki. Nikki, are you muted? We can't hear you. Oh, no. We still can't hear you. I think it's trying to connect. We can, there's bits and pieces. Did, do you want me to come back to you? Did you want to work on it? I can come back to you.
Sure.
Oh, you almost got you there. Okay, we'll come back. I'll go to Charlie, and we'll be back. Good evening, Charlie.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. So just a few items tonight. First one is we are working on a council strategic planning session that I think all of you have on your radar now for the 29th of April. Today, we were able to identify a facilitator for that. We're still working on a location. We have, we're working on the library. We think that's where we want to go with it. But we're testing out the technology just to make sure it's going to work okay for what we need. So we're working our way through that process, and I should have more for you shortly. Also, working on a request for proposals for a classification and compensation study. That's a part of our AFSMI labor agreement, and that would also apply to nonrepresented employees. So that is a contract that should be coming to council in the near future. But we have got to get the RFP out first and get the process started. The Finance Director recruitment is out. So if you didn't get my email, it's out. And please check the website, refer people to that position. We can certainly use all the help we can get in spreading the word that that's out and available. And we'll do the first review on March 18th. So we gave it several weeks, and we'll see where we go at that point. We're excited. We've got one applicant so far, so hoping to track many more in there yet. And lastly, I found out today that the ICMA, ICMA is the International City County Management Association. It's essentially my professional association. They have a city-county management senior fellowship host program for personnel in the Army. And these are folks who are like base commanders or deputy base commanders. And there are a number of host communities throughout the country identified each year for a program where Army personnel get to go and spend a week, the senior Army personnel, with the city. And so we are going to be a host community for this year. There's an orientation session in April. I'm not exactly sure when our person will arrive, but we'll be working out all those logistics. But we'll have somebody here that we can learn from, and they can learn from us, at least for a good solid week. And I'm sure those relationships will continue into the future. So other cities in Washington that are involved are Lakewood and Issaquah as well. So look forward to connecting with those folks. So that's my report for this evening.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Charlie? Hearing none, thank you, Charlie. Moving on to council reports, I'll begin with Councilman Diamond.
Good evening. I don't have a whole lot here. Just gonna pass along a couple of the things that were brought up to me. One of them was a complaint from a constituent about an uptick in semis going down Reed Street, to the point that they're trying to turn their trailers, and they're leaving tire tracks in their yard. They are not thrilled about this. They're going to have to fix it. But it's just something that they wanted to bring up and bring to attention. And of course, they took pictures, so I have those. So that's just something that pass along here. Why they're going around, I couldn't tell you. I didn't speak to any of them, but it seems to be more consistent as trying to avoid the roundabouts. So there's that. Also, passing along that I received a few different complaints from people about the amount of development going on right now. Just concerns about how fast we're growing, the backups on Cook Road, and the backups on Highway 20, and parking, and how all that's going to come into play when this, when these apartments are filled and when there's, you know, when the people are moving into them. So just passing that along. And then on another note, the Cedar Valley Little League Girls State Tournament weekend has tentatively been decided for the third weekend of July. Our last meeting was rescheduled due to some conflicts with some people with the, people on that Little League Committee. But I will bring back more information as that becomes available. And in that, hopefully be talking a little bit with public safety and that sorts of stuff as we talk about where they're wanting to host the tournament at, and what kind of things that they might want to do to help promote it, and what we can do for the city.
All right, thank you. I'm excited about the tournament. That's fantastic. And we'll move to Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you very much. So I, we had the committee meeting. I was on, I'll let Brendan kind of talk about that. That was good. And then we're looking at doing the committee meeting for the planning. And eventually, we'll plan out doing the committee meeting for the safety. I believe Chuck Owens is doing that one. So I'm looking forward to seeing those committee meetings. It's definitely an experience, and reading through the packet has been an experience. It was, like I mentioned, a bit long. So I think that that was definitely something we will work on. As far as getting feedback from the community, a little bit like Sarah Diamond was saying, Councilman Diamond was saying, I have heard about the traffic, mainly going up 20 on Moore Street, I guess, during school hours. And you can, people have said that they're backed up all the way almost to Fruit and Dale as they're trying to get kids to school, which I can see, and then during those rush hours for work. So there is a lot of development. And I mentioned that as we look at the growth of the city, we definitely will, you know, be able to try and communicate that a lot more better to them as well. And then business, drawing in more business has been the concern I've seen with people that, you know, are we able to fill up some of those stores downtown more quickly? Or is there interest in other business? And of course, there always is. So those are some of the things that have come up over a little bit of time. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilman Burns.
Not much for you this evening. Just wanted to say that I was very happy to hear that the logger rodeo is planning on getting back to normal this year. I look forward to the festivities and taking part in the parade. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
Okay, Helping Hands Food Bank and Skagit Transit are doing a Stuff the Bus food drive in honor of Reinewelt's legacy Saturday, February 26th, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, accepting non-perishable food donations and non-food essential items at the Cascade Mall, so.
Thank you. Councilman Allen.
Surprised nothing, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman McGoffin.
Hi, thank you. Just a few things from our technology committee that I want to follow up on. We have some policies that we're trying to work on, the succession plan, the five-year strategic plan, and the security assessment. We had a good meeting with Bill, and I'm looking forward to seeing where we go with those. I'll also be out of town next Wednesday, so I'd like to request to be excused from the next meeting.
All right. Would you like us to excuse you now? Could I receive a motion for that? Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion. All right.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Allen to excuse Councilman McGoffin for the next council meeting. So that would be the March 2nd that you're talking about?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Any discussion, concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Fantastic. Well, whatever you're doing, I hope it's a good time.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along to public comments. It is 6:25 right now, and I am going to open up for public comments. Is there, I know we didn't receive any written comments. You know, I'm going to back up just a minute. I'm going to apologize. Nikki, I said that I would get back to you, and I did not do that. I apologize.
No worries, Mayor. If we have anything of interest to the group, I will be speaking to council a little later on, and nothing to add.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. And again, my apologies. So now, it is 6:26, and I will open it up to public comment. We didn't receive any written public comments, but I am wondering if there is anyone online who would like to make comment? I do not see anyone speaking up or holding up a hand like they usually do. So I am going to close public comment, and we're going to move right on into unfinished business. We're going to talk about the review proposed amendments to the Skagit County countywide planning policies. And I believe, Mr. Coleman, this is you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is, the countywide planning policies is a county document that's related to regional growth issues but related to growth management. So these are policies that affect, that are related to the regional populations, the, just how the county plans for regional growth that would affect other jurisdictions. In the countywide planning policies right now, there's language in it that speaks to eliminating the Boundary Review Board. This is something, review, eliminating the Boundary Review Board is something that the cities are very much in favor of. And that's why it was in the countywide planning policies in the first place. The proposed change is, it actually makes it, so right now, the way it's written is there are several steps that the county needs to go through in order to eliminate the Boundary Review Board. So the planners' group, the Skagit, we call the planners' group. It's the Growth Management Technical Advisory Committee that's under SCOG. We get together and we talk about things that we would like to see done regionally and work together for these regional issues. What we've suggested as the TAC do is to eliminate the Boundary Review Board, make it easier to eliminate the Boundary Review Board. So the proposed changes to the Skagit countywide planning policies is to actually just make it a little bit easier to get rid of the BRB. The Boundary Review Board was originally intended back in the days before Growth Management Act to review annexations that are proposed in cities to make sure that the annexation basically makes sense. It was, before the BRB, there was no way to look at things like concurrency and determine if the fire departments had the ability to serve, and all of the things that the Growth Management Act now requires of cities to do before we even designate an urban growth area. So now, under Growth Management, all the cities are required to not only plan for 20 years population growth, but also designate, not designate, but have plans that show how they're going to accommodate it. And that's, that is our comprehensive plan in all of the reports that are attached to it. That's what we do now in a much broader sense. in a much broader sense, in a much more detailed way than the BRB ever was able to do. So now that we've got this Growth Management Act comprehensive plan process where we study these things detailed and actually have scientific and factual-based information that explains how we're going to manage our growth for 20 years, the Boundary Review Board is no longer really relevant. In fact, the Boundary Review Board often frustrates cities' abilities to then enact our growth planning because what the Boundary Review Board will do is just kinda put together an ad hoc group of people to to review it, and they don't necessarily study all they don't necessarily look at it as closely as the cities has. So the Technical Advisory Committee made this recommendation to include this language in the in the capital, in the countywide planning policies to make it easier for the county to eliminate the Boundary Review Board. That is the sum of what this proposal is. The process is that it goes you know, the Technical Advisory Committee made our suggestion. Now we're bringing it to each of the jurisdictions for the city councils and the public to have some opportunity to speak or make any comments if they so choose. Voice any concerns. But we think this is a good thing for the cities and enables the cities to be able to do the planning for growth the way we intended to without having another body that come in and start making decisions without all of the information that we already have provided. So what we're asking for is, if there's any comments, to pass them along at this time through the mayor. And the mayor is on the Skagit Council of Governments Growth Management Act Steering Committee. The Steering Committee will also be making a recommendation on these proposed changes. And then, after the Steering Committee makes their recommendations, then it will go to the Skagit County Board of County Commissioners for their action. It may even go to the Planning Commission at the county level before that. So this is a multi-step process that has a lot of eyes on it, and staff in the cities especially are really encouraging this change to make things better for our community. That's my presentation. Thank you.
So are there any questions for John at this point?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Lavaca.
I do have a question. I do thank you for answering my email earlier, John. That was wonderful. I just had two questions. One for you, and one for the mayor. On this one, it was this is to eliminate redundancy that we've already got built into the system through the comprehensive plan, to my understanding from your email. So we already have, basically, what we need. It's not a check and balance. It's being removed. It's actually just a redundancy of more things that complicate the system. And then, Mayor, you're on the Steering Committee. How do you feel about that? Is that something that you're in favor?
Yeah, I am. In fact, we've had conversation on this. And we've also had conversation There's the SCOG Board of Directors and the SCOG Transportation. I believe it was on the SCOG No, SCOG Board of Directors that we've actually had conversation. So, yeah, I'm in favor of it. I don't have an issue with it. So, John, are you looking for it says recommended action. Are you looking for any kind of an action here, or is this just kind of making the council aware? What do you need from us?
This is our opportunity to provide any feedback. And then, if you have any feedback, we will be relying on the mayor to provide that feedback through the Skagit Council of Governments Steering Committee, Growth Management Act Steering Committee. There's no needed there's no needed resolutions or anything like that associated with this. If the if the council so chooses to make a motion to approve the proposed changes to the Skagit countywide planning policies, that would be fantastic, but it doesn't even need to be that official. But that would be great if you wanted to make a motion.
So, council, I leave that up to you. What would you like to do? A motion is not required. But if you want to make a motion, we can make that happen. But really, what I think, it sounds like what Mr. Coleman's looking for, and really, what I would appreciate, if there were any thoughts or directions, any questions or concerns that you may have regarding the boundaries.
Madam Mayor, I didn't have any concerns reading through this. It sounds like it's a redundancy that's just extra red tape, slows things down, so if you feel that everything is covered, and from what I'm reading, it would be, even with removing this, then I'd be perfectly fine with it.
All right. So it looks like, John, everyone is in consensus with what you have presented here?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I will put a motion on for us to be able to vote that in, in order to provide that support
Okay.
of the council.
I would second that.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, and it's seconded by Councilman Burns to put the motion forward, the recommendation forward. Is there any more questions or concerns? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, same sign. Okay, very good. All right, John, I guess we'll be talking more about this. You and I will be. Thank you.
Yes, very much, council. I appreciate the motion.
Moving on to the second item. New business is the Recreation and Conservation Office for the Riverfront Park Kiwanis Field Bleacher Project. I think, Nathan, this is you, is it not?
Yes. But I think there might have been one more thing before me.
Did I skip something? Oh, I did. The proposed preliminary plat approval. Oh, for the bucko. Okay. So, John, I guess, is this you again?
Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you.
All right. This is this is a final plat approval. So, as usual, Nikki has a colloquy that she would like to read before we get started, so I'm going to pass it to Nikki to kick us off.
Can you hear me? Perfect. Okay, since this is a quasi-judicial matter, we do run through this colloquy every time that we are asked to decide something like this. So it is important to determine before deciding whether the appearance of fairness doctrine requires any member of this body to refrain from deciding the matter. In light of that requirement, I will ask you some questions before we begin. Does any member of this council have knowledge of or have conducted business with either the proponents or the opponents of this particular plat? Hearing none? Does any member of this council either have a pecuniary or non-pecuniary interest in the outcome of this proceeding? Hearing none? Does any member of this council know whether or not their employer has a financial interest in the property or area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding? Hearing none? Does any member of this council live or own property within 300 feet of the area which will be impacted by the decision of this proceeding? None? Does any member of this council have any special knowledge about the substance of the merits of this proceeding which could or would cause the council member to prejudge the outcome of this proceeding? None? Is there any member of this council who believes that he or she cannot sit and hear this matter fairly and impartially, both as to the respective positions of the proponents and the opponents in this proceeding? None? Has any council member had any ex parte contacts concerning this matter? Is there any member of the audience who, because of the appearance of fairness doctrine, wishes to disqualify any member of council from hearing this matter? Hearing none, I will turn it over to you, John.
Thank you, Nikki.
All right. Thank you, Nikki, and back to the show. So this is just a final plat approval for a or I'm sorry, a preliminary plat approval for a long plat. It's a 64-lot residential subdivision with four duplex lots. It'd be 68 units in total. It's a it really meets code well. This project has been studied to death by staff and the applicant. We've worked extensively to make this project work, and the city council's already approved a developer agreement for this project. So I think the council's pretty well aware of this project ahead, and staff's fully supportive. The hearing examiner recommended approval, and this project will also result in a key arterial connection for the city. So it's really beneficial to the city, and and the applicant is very supportive and would like to go forward with this. So, not a whole lot more to say about it, except for we're hoping for a approval of the resolution to approve preliminary plat of Bucko Estates.
Okay, thank you. So are there any questions for John?
No, I was gonna make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead. Councilwoman Kestie, did you have a
Thank you. I have a comment. Most of you here have heard my stance on development over and over, and I will keep repeating myself because, just like the passion developers have for their bottom line, so is my passion for the residents of Cedar Woolley. It is my belief that Cedar Woolley is not responsible for taking in everyone due to the housing crisis, a phrase that is being used by developers to pull at heartstrings while they take advantage of the extra apartments they will add to aid in this issue. What I see with this project is longer driving time for my constituents to get from their home to the end of Cook Road. I see more kids at the already busting-at-the-seam schools, more roads to maintain, and the need for police and fire services. And I see a bedroom community without the infrastructure to support it because it's in the tenure plan and not in the present. It's mind-boggling to think that these houses, apartments, and duplexes aren't even here, yet I sat at Cook Road thinking there was an accident that's caused the backup, but nope, that's just how it is now. Can I do anything about this development plan? No, because they have done everything they have been asked, and it's within the scope of the codes. Developers try to pitch their cell with smoke and mirrors that they are doing the citizens of Cedar Woolley a favor, when in reality, the bulk of the residential developers either do not live in this area or have moved away, and they will not experience the impact that their developments have on this community. This development is one of many coming up that will have a long-term impact that is very concerning to me. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, that was an eloquent you know, going back 20-some years on the council, Adolf Bucko was tried to develop that. Their dad, or grandpa, maybe. I don't know. We've been hashing this out for a long time. It sounds like it's really been worked over well by planning. I'm with you. Gee whiz, I was born here way before you were. And, you know, but growth is inevitable. I hate to see the growth on the Cook Road and Highway 20 and all the traffic, but I think it's well thought out. I think it's well planned by the city. So I will make a motion that we adopt approval of the Bucko property.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen to adopt Resolution 1089-22 to approve the preliminary plat of Bucko Estates, subject to the conditions contained in the hearing examiner's findings of fact, conclusions, and recommendation. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that. They did do everything by code within within the reason there.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman Diamond. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Resolution 1089-22 is approved. Thank you, council. Okay. Moving on. So now, Nathan, now we have you on board here, and talking about the benches. Is this correct?
Yep. Yep. So, good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for having me. So the item I have for your consideration this evening is a possible adoption of a resolution authorizing the staff to apply for another Parks Grant from the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Youth Athletic Facilities Program to fund the replacement of eight portable bleacher sets for down at Riverfront Park. This grant program is the same program that funded the bulk of the Winnie Hauser project that we finished up last year, so we think we have a good shot at it. But the replacement of these bleacher sets is an item that's identified in our capital improvement program. And as I mentioned in my council memo, the bleachers that we're using at the park now, they're homemade, about 12 years old, and they're beginning to show their wear and tear from just being out in the weather. But they're also made of pressure-treated lumber, which is not ideal to sit on, and not to mention the fact that they can give you a pretty good sliver if you're not careful, and they're also not ADA accessible, so if we're successful with the grant, we will replace the wooden ones with galvanized steel bleachers that have aluminum tops, and they will have wheels mounted on them so that in the event of a flood, they can be towed to higher ground, and the new ones will be ADA accessible with about a 30-year service life. So the total cost for the bleachers is about $100,000, and if we're successful with the grant application, the grant will cover about 50% of that cost, and the funds would be available in the fall of 2023. And funding for the city's portion of the project are proposed to come from real estate excise tax funds, so the Recreation and Conservation Office requires that the council approve the attached resolution authorizing staff to work on the grant application. So what we're looking for this evening is a motion to approve Resolution 1088-22, authorizing staff to apply for and accept funding from the RCO to fund this project. And I'm happy to answer questions.
All right. Thank you, Nathan. Are there any questions for Nathan? Okay, if not, he is looking for a motion. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, second or Diamond, seconded by Councilwoman Kestie. The motion is to adopt the Resolution 1088-22, which authorizes the staff to accept funding from RCO. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Fantastic. Motion carries. Thank you, Nathan. Thank you for your hard work on the RCO applications. I know how complicated and how difficult they can be. It's a lot of work, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
So, moving on then to executive session. So Nikki, I'm just wondering, how long do you think we will need for this? We are going to go into executive session, pending litigation pursuant to RCW 4231101I. How long do you think we will need?
So I think we should start with 10 minutes, and then if we need more, we can pop out and add some time.
Excellent. Okay. All right. That's what we will do. And so, in doing this, are we going to move into a different room?
I recommend that. Mayor, this is Bill.
Okay.
And you bring your iPad with you and enable the audio when you're in that room, so Chuck and Nikki can and others that are remote can participate.
So for those of you online, and those of you in the audience, we will be back in approximately 10 minutes. If not, I will come back and let you know how much longer we will be. Thank you. So, Bill, am I staying in
We're leaving all of our stuff, right?
Yeah.
It should be okay. I mean, I think it's fine.
I mean, I think it's fine.
We're gonna go into the lunchroom?
They don't have one anywhere within reasonable range of distance. Godfather's Taco Pizza down the middle way. Yeah, I used to go there a lot. We actually went there one day, and it was something else. My. I know it's been one of those weeks already. I already smoked two cigars out in the parking lot today. It's just too goddamn cold. It's been out there smoking too long.
Oh, like what, sixteen degrees this morning or something?
Yeah, something like that. I think it was nineteen or twenty at my house.
I don't know what this is going on about. I think we love our police department. So are we gonna get back in and call it the school?
Yeah.
I don't know if that works.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We can say. I do feel pretty confident that we're gonna have an S R O E type settlement. This school would be a work. Well, to. Joe, I want to talk about the increasing classes. Well, they've been being down to three hundred students, and that's why they have cuts in their funding. So what are we talking about tomorrow? Galvez? No, it's not. Turn the ship around.
I just want to let all of you know in the original meeting that the executive session has been extended for another five minutes.
What's that? Yeah, he might be a little old. I'm not sure. Fifty-nine comes to mind, but he might have had some medical thing or. Well, you you can still retire. You just don't get to collect until you're fifty. So, you know, Jason retired, and he's forty-nine or fifty now.
Hey, Leo. Want to turn on your audio, Leo?
Can you hear me?
Yep, sure can. So.
Okay, sorry, once I figure it out.
You may not have gotten a word, but the meeting actually are starting at six o'clock.
Oh, I did not, Mark. Okay.
I forgot to tell you, your item was on the consent calendar, and nobody brought any questions up. They didn't remove it from the calendar, so it was approved as submitted. So you're all done.
Oh, okay, Mark. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate you taking the time to answer Councilmember Lowaka's questions. That was a good job.
Yeah, I thought that would that would help tremendously and, you know, so it could anyway, help speed things along. So good, okay, I'm glad it worked.
All right, so anyway, we don't need to stay any longer. They're actually in executive session at the moment, and when they come back out, they're probably gonna return.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Sorry about being late. I didn't I didn't know they changed it. God, I'm old. Okay, talk to you later.
It worked out fine. I tried to call you a couple times, but it's not an issue. All right, talk to you tomorrow. All right, talk to you tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, Mark. Bye-bye.
Hey, the house behind me sold for, um, zero one million. And it was just, it was just a nice shop. Imagine being packed out here, you know?
I don't think I've ever been out here when there's very many people. My first meeting, that was it.
All right, it is 7:10, and we are back in session, and no, that's what I'm looking for. There was no action taken at this point. So with that, if there's anything for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.